I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Hey, man, that was aggressive.
Yeah, that was authoritative.
You know, getting everyone's attention. Saw some people hopping up there. All right, so welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Calamasa, city council meeting. Happy to see all of you here. If we can do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kundif.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Manley.
Here.
Mayor Protim Cervantes.
Here.
Mayor Molina.
Mayor Molina is excused for personal reasons. Make that for the record. Let the record say that the staff present, our city manager Cobal, city attorney Flower, city clerk Gertis, finance director Reed, planning director Lucia, public works director Shakir, city engineer Thornton, fire deputy chief Shaw, and sheriff captain Northrup. If you could all stand with me and we'll honor our nation's flag.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a presentation, Ucaipa Valley Water District. Joe Zoba, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Great good afternoon, good evening. It's great to be before you and I know this is a follow-up from the tour we did recently. And at the very end, if there's anyone interested, staff members, members of the public interested in the tour, be happy to take them on the tour as well. So I'll move through this pretty quick, but I've added a couple of slides to talk a little bit about some of the potential for new development in terms of commercial and industrial buildings here in Calamasa. One of the questions I was asked recently for the City of Ucaipa is whether or not the valley has enough water to sustain the development that's coming in. So I thought I'd do it by a little bit of comparison. This is the Rialto Colton Basin and what this is, this is called the change in storage. Every year, there's an analysis on how much water is actually in the groundwater basin and then they compare that against the next year and the next year. So from this data, you can see it runs from 1977 down through 2024. And at one point in the 1980s, it peaked out at a little bit more than 60,000 acre feet. And since that point, the amount of water that's been extracted from the ground has been more than what's been added. So that basin in particular has dropped pretty significantly. And right now, it's if you take the high versus the low of this basin, this basin's about 5% of what it once was. So it kind of gives you a little bit of a scale as to how things are going based on the trend. And now moving further east, we get into the Bunker Hill Basin. This is the, or excuse me, we call it the San Bernardino Basin. This is Loma Linda, Redlands, Mentone, out through San Bernardino, up into the Cone Pass. And this has a similar track to it. Again, back in the 80s, it hit a recent high and then recently it started dropping off where more production comes out of that basin. And this is just a massive, massive basin. All of the water and the rainfall that hits the San Bernardino Mountains that's tributary to this basin, that all would end up going into the basin. But this one's also trended downwards over time. And they've had a couple of highs, the peaks there where it says like 5.8 million acre feet. That would be a high groundwater condition in the area of the 215 and 10 interchange. So they make an effort to not go that high, but nonetheless, this has been a basin that's been draining down as well. In the Ucaipa Basin, we have a slightly different story. We had our downturn in the late 80s, early 90s. We were able to build our water treatment plant in 2007 and start bringing water, having access to state project water in 2002. And with that access to the water, we've taken a slightly different approach. We try to recharge as much water as possible, put that water in the ground, utilize the water treatment plant to minimize our groundwater production. And off of that, we've been able to bring our water levels back up. You can see our basin is about 2.27 million acre feet and we're continuing to grow that. One thing that I like to shoot as a target, and it's not shown on this chart because it only goes to 1993, but I'd really like to bring our basins back up to the levels where they were in the 1950s. Just before the valley started to grow with the kind of urbanization of this area, the shift from ag use to urban use, we'd like to get back into that 1950s, 1960s area. So we still have some room to fill this basin. So as you see this chart, over the next couple of years, it'll continue to trend upwards, filling more water into the basin as it's available. The way we do that is we've adopted a sustainability plan back in 2008. Every new house that comes in brings with it a 20-year supply of water. So we have them, charge them for that amount of water and we bring that in and put it into the ground. That's one of the reasons why the groundwater's been continuing to go up. So one thing we could tell the public, we could look at them in the eye and say, every new house that comes in is guaranteed a 20-year supply moving into the future. And then we do more on top of that. We also, for the community at a whole, we bring in 15% more water than we actually use. So every seven years, we're building a year's worth of supply of water. So that's been our strategy, keep building the basin, keep putting water in the basin, get us back up to that 1950s, 1960s level. So far, in the Ucaipa Basin, we have about 10.75 billion gallons of water, about 33,000 acre feet in storage. That's over and beyond that 2 million. That's something that's just for Ucaipa Valley Water District and that's about a three-year supply. In the Beaumont Basin, which covers a portion of Calamasa, we have 16,800 acre feet. That's a little, that's about a year and a half's worth of supply in addition to access to the water that comes in. I'll talk a little bit about that pink arrow, 0.82 billion gallons. We're looking at putting that in through our aquifer storage and recovery project. That'll be the injection of treated recycled water. Again, I'll talk about that shortly. And the 1.63 billion gallons, that's water that comes from the state water project that we drop off in the Ucaipa portion of the basin. Since we're connected between Ucaipa and Calamasa, we can move this water between either of these two entities. It's just a matter of who we buy the water from, whether it's the pass agency in this area or San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District in Ucaipa. One of the keys to the basin, one of the reasons the water doesn't just spill out and go downstream is we have a number of earthquake faults. The big ones coming our way, but in the meantime, we use these faults to hold water back and store water in these sub compartments through the Ucaipa and Calamasa area. The barriers become really, really important and we do monitor this as to make sure that when we do fill them up, if you get too much water in the basin, it will spill over the earthquake faults. They get a little fuzzy as they get to the surface. They're really well-defined at depth, but as the fault lines get close to the surface, they become a little bit more smudged and water's able to pass over them. So we monitor that activity as well as we move forward. As you know, the district and with your help, we've been really industry leaders in building a recycled water program and integrating all of our resources, imported water, recycled water, treated wastewater. We've pretty much closed the loop now where we can import water from Northern California, treat it, deliver it to our customers, utilize that as wastewater, treat it again, bring it back as recycled water. And it essentially does close the loop on our water supply. So it's really interesting. If every agency in California did what we have done by closing the loop and maximizing our recycled water, we would essentially have 100% year on the state water project, year after year after year. So like this year, while we're at 50%, it'd be a guaranteed sustainable water supply if this formula was more so implemented throughout the state of California. So we're super proud of what we've done and we're really proud of having Calamasa as an active partner. You're one of the leaders. You're gonna have more dual-plum homes than probably anywhere else in the state of California. You'll be approaching about 10,000 dual-plum homes when we're already passing some of our local agencies in terms of how many dual-plum homes we actually have. So it's super exciting and that's gonna be here in Calamasa. I mentioned the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District and San Gregorio Pass Water Agency. These are the agencies that are state water contractors. They are the ones that are responsible for bringing water down from Northern California. We can't do it on our own. We need them as partners and as you know, you have the agencies, the state water contractors, water districts like Ucaipa Valley Water Districts, and then we have two mutual water companies in our area, South Mesa Mutual and Western Heights Mutual as well. So between all of us, we are responsible for managing the water resources here in the Ucaipa Valley. For those that have gone on the tour, you've seen our microfiltration facilities and nano filtration facilities. This plant is going now on 20 years and it's just amazing technology that we can really filter out any impurities in the water and create almost a designer water. It's how pure can we make it? And we can assure the customers that we just have clean water going into their pipes utilizing this really robust technology. You just can't get through these membranes. The membranes on the left, on the microfiltration membranes are the particle filtration. So those do have pores in it, but they stop items above a certain particle size. And then the item on the right is the nano filtration membrane and this is where we're separating out molecules. We're able to pick the molecules we want to filter through, stop the molecules we don't want to go through and end up with a really pure H2O water supply. Microfiltration membranes are the vertical tubes at the water treatment plant and the nano filtration or RO are the horizontal tubes and horizontal processes. We've done the same thing at the wastewater treatment plant. We've essentially put a drinking water facility at the back end of our treatment plant, same thing, microfiltration that we have at the water plant and reverse osmosis down at the bottom end. So we've been able to bridge these two facilities and assure the public that we have very, very similar facilities working at both ends. But now we're ready to take the next step. We're ready to expand the reverse osmosis at the wastewater plant and I'll show you a little bit of a comparison about how pure that water's gonna be coming out of that wastewater plant. It'll go into the recycled water system and the recycled water system, as we talked about, is dual-plummed here in the summer wind trails and will continue through the Mesa Verde project, assuring the public that we'll have a really reliable, sustainable supply for the community. We've been able to produce a couple of articles. This one was, I think it, can't read it from here, I think it was 97 or 99, where the Civil Engineering Journal of ASE did an article on the summer wind development and the use of dual plumbing. And we got a lot of good traction for both the district and the City of Calamasa when this article came out. And as you know, the dual-plum homes have two water meters, one recycled water meter, one drinking water meter. And now we're able to build homes for four new homes that go in that are dual-plummed that uses the same amount of drinking water as one existing house. So we're essentially building new homes at a rate of four to one in terms of their water, drinking water footprint. The recycled comes from the water used the day before, so that one is renewable and recyclable and the drinking water is the one that we're really trying to focus in on using that high-quality water, not for irrigation purposes, but for in the house use. The multiplier effect, I talked about this briefly on the tour and I think I'm starting to develop this out a little bit further, working with agencies in Texas, actually. There's a water research institute and they have a really bold industrial partnership with people that are trying to really figure out the use of recycled water and high purity water. And in Texas, they don't have the ability to get rid of that brine waste like we do. We have the ability to send it to the ocean. Because of a lot of areas in Texas are so far away from the ocean, they use more injections. So they'll actually take their brine, their salt water and inject it deep, deep into the ground and forget about it over time. But that's just another future problem waiting to happen. We have partners down in Orange County that'll take our brine, they'll treat it again and reuse that water before it goes out to the ocean. So this multiplier effect, I think it opens up a great opportunity for both Ucaipa and Calamasa. There's a jobs multiplier, an earnings multiplier and sales multiplier. And just focusing on the jobs multiplier, if we bring in the right type of business here to Calamasa, that can spawn a couple of other types of jobs. And there's a lot of information available on this online for manufacturing, trade to information technology, some of the cooling facilities that are needed for some of the AI technology nowadays. That just continues to build. Hospitals are another great tool where you bring in one hospital job and it leads to several others. I think the example here locally is Sorenson Engineering. They continue to grow. They're one of our biggest customers, discharging brine into the sewer treatment plant. And typically, what happens in Southern California or down in North San Diego County is that you have to locate along a brine line in order to make use of a brine disposal. What we've put together here in Ucaipa and Calamasa is you could locate anywhere in the City of Calamasa and have access to a brine line. And that's a really strong selling point to a pharmaceutical company or several other industrial type of manufacturing businesses that they don't have to locate in a specific alignment, anywhere in the city will do. And we want to work continuously with some of the manufacturers and industries to show them how that can be done, just like we did with Sorenson Engineering. This is an example of how that system works. It's up and operational right now. Biotech manufacturing, medical supplies, water purification facilities, computer chips, commercial laundries, food processing, being we're close to the Coachella Valley, beverage processing, electronics assembly and pharmaceutical. A lot of the tariffs, there's a lot of discussions about bringing jobs back into America and you know, Calamasa is really at a great point where we have facilities in place with water supply readily available and this brine disposal to really bring industries into this area and have this job multiplier effect actually take hold and show people how to do that. I want to talk a little bit about the ASR project, the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project. I think this is another huge project for Calamasa. It's in your city and it's just a great opportunity for the district where essentially we've developed out a brand-new water supply, a supply that didn't exist before, a supply that will actually grow with new development. So as we develop, the supply just gets bigger and bigger and bigger and it's a really high-purity drought-proof water supply. And that's what's really gonna bridge this community and separate us out from most of Southern California and I'd say even most of the arid southwest United States. So I did this analysis and I wanted to make it where people could replicate this on their own, just by, you know, the common AI tools that are available out for people nowadays. I picked a couple of different types of water and I just asked the system, rank the following types of water and just put them in order from the ones with the most chemical constituents, bacteria and viruses to the least. So I did that and it came up with ocean water as being the most contaminant laden water and then ocean desalinization as being the cleanest water. So then the next query was, okay, we'll rank them. Give it, I know the high, I know the low, I know how they kind of fit, but put them on a scale of one to 100, 100 being ocean water and one being ocean desal, a really clean water type, and just wanted to sort all these water types around. So ocean water became first, that received a score of 100, a lot of microbiological constituents. State project water, we typically think of being very, very clean, coming down from Northern California, stream water and lake water. That got a score of 80, that's untreated water that we ultimately either spread in the ground or filter at the water treatment plants. Nonpotable groundwater, this would be something that has like nitrates in it that you can't use for drinking water, but you can use for irrigation use. We have a couple of nonpotable wells in the community, so that's a little bit cleaner than state project water largely because it has lower microbial counts. Stormwater coming in, especially that first flush picks up a lot of oils and greases from the roadways, that received a score of 50. Then we get into drinking water. Now this is where that ranking drops significantly. So now we're at 20 for the level of drinking water. This would be water treated at the water treatment plant, for example, and it starts removing all of the biology, starts getting out some of the organic chemicals and things like that. And then after that comes the district's Title 22 recycled water as being more clean than drinking water, which is kind of interesting. I don't think most people would see it this way, but I put in there that it's a partial RO-treated water, exactly what we have at the local regional water filtration facility. It just reduces a lot of the microbiology, reduces a lot of the ions, the minerals that would be typically found in drinking water coming out of the ground, all of that's removed. So it's actually comes in at a 10 on this scale. And this is where it gets interesting, is where we're going is full reverse osmosis recycled water gets a score of three. Really, really, really clean water. Almost everything's removed out of it. And when we put this water in the ground, it's actually gonna clean the water that's here in Calamasa that's high-quality water already in the ground. So for example, hexavalent chrome, there are cities around us that are dealing with chrome six issues, hexavalent chrome, they'll be spending tens of millions of dollars building water treatment plants to remove this chromium from the water supply. Calamasa, the limit's 10, Calamasa, what we have in the ground is a 6. When we start putting this injection water into the ground, we're gonna take that 6 and lower it next to zero because the water we're putting in the ground is actually at a zero. So we won't need a treatment plant, we won't need nitrate removal facilities, suddenly we're putting water so clean in the ground that it's gonna do its job over the next couple of decades and continue to clean. And instead of creating a pollution or toilet to tap, or it's exactly the opposite, it's gonna create this clean buffer of water that this basin has actually never seen in its history, coming in from rainwater and all of that. So it's a great project and I want to make sure the City of Calamasa is recognized for your involvement and the location of this facility because it's gonna be just amazing quality water here in the area. Then as I mentioned, ocean desal is a 1. I then questioned this query, I did one other thing, I said, okay, what about glacial water? Take water off a glacier, just give me the cleanest, I'm gonna try and beat ocean desal. So I set glacial water at 1 and that analysis changed ocean desal to a 3 and full reverse osmosis to a 4. So just to kind of put it into perspective, how clean this water is, this is as clean as technology can really get the water and we're gonna have it here in our community. So we're very, very excited about that. Three wells are going in for injecting this water right along the freeway. The district has bought property. You've probably seen this or heard about it. I know it's been lit up at night, we've had a couple of concerns about that, but the well has to be drilled, it's 24-hour operation, they just can't stop once they're starting to dig down to 1,000 feet deep. Some of the drill bits, some of the drill rigs, and again, I know you've seen all of these. And then this is now where at the point of putting in the perforated pipe that will allow the groundwater to seep into the pipe to allow us either to A, pull it out or B, put that water into the groundwater supply. So as I mentioned, when I started, love to give more tours, I think we have something really, really unique here. Incredibly proud of everything that we've done and everything we've done together and looking forward to continuing our working relationship. And if I could help with any of your projects or provide information to you as you have questions about development, how we're doing what we're doing, I'd be happy to take you, the community on a tour and show them these facilities firsthand. I didn't even touch on the power issues and the solar power, but all of these facilities that I talked about, the water plant and the sewer plant are now gonna be solar-powered to get this clean water via the sun is just gonna be another amazing attribute to us here in Ucaipa and Calamasa area. So thank you for your time, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Joe, very fascinating. Any questions, council?
No, I don't have a question, just more so a comment. I was on that tour and the facilities were very impressive and the fact that you guys do such a great job for our city along with Mesa, you guys, the both of you guys cover every need we've got and continue, just continually find ways to make it better and that's pretty impressive and so I just want to commend you for that and say it was a great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Manley, is he here?
I do, yes. Well, thank you. I actually see right behind my backyard in the window, I have a whole 360 view of the backyard. So I see the guys working 24/7, so appreciate that. I'm not complaining, I actually love it because it's actually been a benefit for our community, putting the water back into our planet, so that's amazing. Another thing too, I will definitely love to see, because you mentioned about bringing in jobs, good-paying jobs with the whole project and stuff. I definitely want to see, because you said medical facilities, that'll be great, like Kaiser or any other, Loma Linda University or anything like that, Riverside County or Farva, because those are good-paying positions as well too. So I will definitely want to hear more of those things and I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thanks. Thank you very much and happy to help out anymore. I know you're working on a plan, I believe, with a consultant, so we'd be happy to kind of bring them along. I don't think a whole lot of people know about how this can work. Sorenson was very close to leaving this area because they needed a brine line and the closest one they could find was in Ranch of Cucamonga. We told them that we, we had that discussion right before we completed our facilities, explained to them what we were doing and now you've seen them off the freeway, they're just continuing to expand. So they are our biggest success story and I know we could have just more of those stories here in Calamasa as well.
One of the biggest things too, because you know, I come from Kaiser, they think about green, it's all about green, earth and all that stuff and healthy livings. So that's a pretty good selling point, maybe try to sell it that way too.
So I had the privilege of going on a tour of YWD's facilities and I, along with Councilmember Kundif, was very impressed. Got it running a great operation, I think the public should be proud of the water we have in this region. And thank you for the education on the water quality. In fact, that was really fascinating, ocean water and state water. Surprised by, was most surprised by the state water number and the recycled water number, a 10, I'm still not drinking it, but that was pretty good, it's pretty good.
Yeah, it is amazing and do you know, I created that just so somebody could replicate it as well. You could run the same query and just change the water type, change the definitions and see how it changes as well.
That's great. Well, thank you for coming out, we appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
You too. All right, we're moving on to communications from the public. We do have a few, but if anyone else would like to make public comment, this is your opportunity to make a comment on anything not on the agenda or on the agenda. We ask that you would limit your comments to three minutes, just fill out a speaker slip and hand it to our city clerk and we'll take your comments. So first I have here is Mr. Howard Reeves.
My name is Howard Reeves, I live at 1017 Douglas Street, Calamasa. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hello.
We can hear you loud and clear now.
Howard Reeves, I live at 1017 Douglas Street, Calamasa. And Mayor Protim, council members and city staff. I'm here tonight to share, hi Kelly, I'm here tonight to share hopefully some history that's gonna be made in Calamasa tonight. Everybody's got a flyer of what we're working on, it's been a long time coming. And I am happy to announce that ever since Calamasa acquired the name Calamasa, which I believe was established in 1929 when the community wanted a post office. Since that time up through the, including the time we've been a city, Calamasa has never had a youth baseball, softball sports program. All the youth have had to go across the county line and play in Ucaipa all these years. But we have it up and going. We have the bank account open, but all we gotta do is raise funds to make it happen. So that's why everybody got a copy of that. I would like to share with everybody, the people that's on the board of directors, in case you know anybody. Vice president is Jeff Hewitt. Secretary is Patricia Reeves, treasurer is Donna Johnson, safety officer is Ryan Miller, player agent is Deanna Cobb, equipment officer is Richard Macias and umpire-in-chief is Ron Smith. Now that name Smith may ring a bell with some of you people. Ron's wife is Diane Smith, who's an ex-councilmember for Ucaipa and also who started the pickleball program years ago in Ucaipa and now it's a big success. So I want to share with the board of directors, with everybody, so you know that we hopefully have a success of making this happen. Now, I want to spend my time helping this board of directors make this program successful for the kids. So I'm announcing tonight that has effective immediately, I'll be resigning from the Parks Trails and Commission as a commissioner and I want to thank, what's your name, Eric? I want to thank Eric for appointing me and Eric, I wish you the best finding my replacement. So I want to thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions on the baseball program? Okay.
Not at this time.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Howard, and thank you for your years of service, this community. Appreciate you. Next, we have Ms. Heather Carruthers.
Hi. I know Donna brought up last time the weeds, the fire hazards that we have, and once again, we were told that there's not enough people. There's only 14 or 16 people to take care of all these problems in our city. So, I don't understand why you're not hiring anybody. I don't. You seem to have money for a third-party contractor to take care of Fourth Street Park that our guys used to take care of, but you have money to pay a third-party contractor to now take care of Fourth Street Park. And now, you're spending money and money and money on this new park when you don't have the sufficiency to take care of the park that we have. You spent $8 million on a library that we absolutely did not need. If any of you had ever gone to the library like we go every week, there's never more than 10 people in there, four of them are staff. Renovation, a sprucing up would have been all that we need, a less costly sprucing up would have sufficed. We care about the things we cared about 50 years ago, our schools and our roads, yet you seem incapable of dealing with this. Instead, you propose asinine things like logos on street signs, putting an AMPM in a very residential neighborhood, turnabouts before again fixing our streets. You're spending a crazy amount of money on this park. Our mamas and grandmas taught us that you don't get new things if you haven't learned to take care of the things that you have. And you all have not taken care of the things you have, nor are you, period. You were elected to do the things that our Calamasa citizens and community need and want, not your agenda. Our citizens and our community come first. If you're incapable of fiscal community responsibility, then we, the citizens, can certainly change that at the next available opportunity. Howard, Howard should not have had to do this. Our city should have supported this. Our city should have provided something for the youth of our city. Howard should not have had to do this. That's insane, insane. Do you even ask yourselves, does our community need this? Have we fixed our streets, which is what our citizens want? Have we taken care of the public structures we already have? The answer to that is no. So, y'all need to step up and do the right thing. You consistently don't. You need to hire the people we need to hire, take care of the things we already have, and stop bringing on new projects when you don't have the people to take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Rayberston? No? What's that? Oh, sorry, was it Robertson? Roberson, I'm sorry. I see. I apologize. Rhonda?
Yes, hello, Mayor Portem, city council members, directors, chiefs, and everybody else. I just want to come here today and compliment, if I may. I've been living in the city for four years. I am very, very impressed with the growth and the opportunities that have come forth out of the city. I want to say that particularly dealing with the food truck and vendor affair that we've been having every Friday, to me, it's like the birth of a new child. You may make a mistake with the first one, but the second one, you pretty much get it down pat. And I think even for the first one, it was a great turnout. There was something that was presented to me about an ant problem, that's Mother Nature. I presented it to the staff, and the staff readily got on that, and all of the vendors were completely happy. I don't want it to be mistaken or misunderstood that there was a problem that wasn't resolved. It was resolved right away. The efficiency of the staff has been wonderful, and I'm very proud to sit on the commission for Park Trails and Recreation. And I'm not a first-time commissioner, but a first-time one here in this city. But I want to say that even being here, that there are things that I'm very proud to be involved in, and that's one of them. And I think the city council should give itself a hand as well for the progress that they've made so far in dealing with that. I look forward to future things to go on in this city, and I just want to thank the commission staff that appear every month, and that they're always receptive and patient even with some things that we may or may not agree on. So, that's why I'm here today. Thank you so much. Compliments to you all. You may not hear it often, but I'm here to say it today. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your service to our city. Thomas, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, hello, City Council. My name is Bill Thomas, residing in town for 42 years. I just wanted to address, I know ordinance 414 is going to be second reading tonight, and I know that's been going on for two decades, and nothing I can say tonight is going to change that. But I think that Joe Zova's presentation tonight is timely because what I'd like to present or at least look at is the fact that we only have so much available land in Calamasa, and that 115 acres that now is going to be approved for 2.25 million square feet of industrial, once that's built, it's built. And like Mr. Zova was indicating, we've got different technologies nowadays where we can utilize our space a little differently, and that would be a prime location. It's unfortunate that we're going to be doing what we're doing. This is a gateway to our community. It's going to be miserable for the residents in a 50-mile radius or more that we're going to have to endure, and it changes the face of our city, and it's unfortunate this happened. Like I said, this has been going on for two decades. Summerwind Ranch was well-planned. November 2020, in the depths of the COVID-19 pandemic, that first reading came up for this project on that 115 acres, and almost in the dead of night on a Zoom meeting, that was first changed because that was initially regional retail. That land is actually very valuable, and the city manager should know this, and they shouldn't actually have been suggesting this. That is considered at-grade. Think 210 freeway, Colonies Crossroads at campus, that's an at-grade regional retail project. Right there, where we're going to be putting 2.25 million square feet of warehouses, is now going to be lost. Instead of having, like Mr. Zova's saying, new tech businesses using our brine lines or having top-of-the-line, just you know the retailers, I think you guys travel a little bit, you know who the retailers are at Colonies Crossroads. On the east side, this side of the freeway, they were talking about another project there for industrial that also is actually more valuable. So, my hope is that we've got this project that you're going to be doing the second reading for. It's basically 11-year expiration. The hope is for the community that a good developer comes along, regional retail developer, and suggests another use for that, because what we're doing tonight is a mistake. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to our consent calendar and business items. Before I get a motion for approving the consent calendar and agenda, we need to make a couple changes. First, we need to pull item 11. It's in need of some clarification and revisions.
Correct.
And then, we are, I'm asking, due to the absence of Mayor Molina, if we can continue item 14 to the next council meeting. So, if I can get a motion to that effect?
Before that, I have a few other things to announce. First of all, before the city council takes action on the consent calendar, Councilmember Garcia has informed me that he will be recusing himself from voting on item seven. This is second reading and adoption of the ordinance approving the Oak Valley Logistics Center Project DA Development Agreement. As he announced before the ordinance was introduced at the council's last meeting, public hearing, he is recusing himself to the proximity of the project to his personal residence. Provided, however, that the council does not remove item seven from the consent calendar for separate discussion, Councilmember Garcia may remain in the chamber, does not need to leave, and his vote to approve the rest of the consent calendar would be recorded, would not include item seven, and his vote on item seven would be recorded as an abstention. If, however, the city council does remove that item for separate discussion at all, he would have to leave at that time. And last thing, just to add, that there are actually three ordinances on the consent calendar for second reading and adoption. So, if it were the pleasure of Mayor Portem, I could read the titles before you vote on that after the motion, please.
Yes, thank you. So, what's the best way to handle this, in your opinion? Should we take item seven separately?
No, it can remain on the consent calendar, and as long as it does remain on the consent calendar, Councilmember Garcia can remain in the room and vote on the motion to approve, but just acknowledging that you would be abstaining from item seven, correct?
Correct. So, I'll be sustaining for item number seven due to conflict of interest because I'll be super close to that project.
Sounds good. So, can I get a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar items one through 10 and number 12 excluding the 11.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Just going to read the titles of the three ordinances.
Please. Thank you for catching that.
All right. So, item five, is second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 412 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Calamasa, California, adopting specific Plan Area 1 Amendment 5. That's SPA 22-01, modifying land use acreages, land use locations, and reconfiguring parcels on an 853.4 acre portion of the Summerwind Ranch and Oak Valley Specific Plan Project located at the intersection of Roberts Road and Singleton Road. Item six, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 413, in ordinance of the city of Calamasa approving First Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement 25-02 between the city of Calamasa and Gen SoCal 1 LLC for the Summerwind Trails Project at the Summerwind Ranch at Oak Valley Specific Plan Project on 853.4 gross acres of real property located at the intersection of Roberts Road and Singleton Road. Item seven, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 414, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Calamasa approving Development Agreement 25-03 between the city of Calamasa and QR Burcher Oak Valley Owner LLC for the Burcher Logistics Center at Oak Valley Town Center Project on 115 acres located approximately 1/4 mile northwest of the Cherry Valley Boulevard I-10 overcrossing to approximately 1/4 mile northwest of the Singleton Road I-10 overcrossing.
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Kundif, a second by Councilmember Manley. And so, all those in favor? I, I let the record say that Councilmember Garcia abstained from item seven, but the rest of the consent calendar was approved with the exception of item 11. Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Portem and members of the council. I'm going to have our Public Works Director, Mahdi Shakir, take this item.
Good evening, Mayor Portem and council members. As mentioned before you, you will see a revision to the previously submitted staff report and resolution for the purchase and installation of the shade structure for the Public Works Yard. Currently, the Public Works Yard lacks adequate shade for the equipment and for staff operations. The shade structure was presented to the council during the fiscal year 2526 budget process. So, staff solicited three quotes with the lowest quote coming from Interstate Steel Structures. But since the original quote was provided, it was brought to our attention that the initial price did not include the cost for engineered plans, which is needed to pull our building permit for it. The other quotes we did receive did include this component, but the updated quote from Interstate Steel Structures still came in the lowest. So, and then additionally, to ensure we can proceed without delay, staff is requesting a $1,000 contingency in the new resolution. This is to cover any additional costs that we may incur because there is additional fees if there's any leveling required beyond three inches. So, the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget includes $13,000 allocated for this equipment. The revised quote and contingency brings the not-to-exceed amount to $17,265.46, which exceeds the budgeted amount by $4,265.46. So, staff recommends covering the shortfall by processing a minor budget amendment to increase appropriation for this item, and sufficient funds are available in the Capital Projects Fund to accommodate this. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions, comments, concerns for our Public Works Director?
No questions.
All right, seeing none, can we get a motion to approve item 11 in the consent calendar?
I can move to approve item number 11 as amended.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Right. So, now we need a motion to continue item 14 on the agenda and then to approve the balance of the agenda and waive the full reading of ordinances. Can I get a motion to that effect?
I can move to continue item number 14.
Second.
Sorry, mayor.
We're good, okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so that brings us to our Sheriff Captain report.
Good evening, Mayor Portem, council. I'm going to cover June 2025 Part 1 crimes, and then I'll get into July. So, for June, we had three assaults, five burglaries. One of those burglaries was a residential burglary, two vehicle thefts, seven thefts, for a total of 17 Part 1 crimes. And then, for July, we had a total of 505 incidents for the month. For the first part of 2025, there were 3,287 incidents. That's a slight increase from last year, an increase of about 131 incidents. And then, we had 94 arrests made during the first six months of the year. That's an increase of about 15 from the same period last year. For July 2025, we had three assaults, one burglary, two vehicle thefts, 20 thefts, for a total of 26 Part 1 crimes. There were, currently is 173 Part 1 crimes year-to-date, and then for July, we had a total of 699 incidents. No real significant incidents to report. We did have a few significant crashes during those two months, two of them involved DUIs. Both of those suspects were apprehended. Any questions?
Thank you, Captain. Any questions? Councilmember Garcia?
I do, Captain. Does this be appropriate for our sermon when the district starts coming back?
Yeah, I think you can, we can address just maybe more in general, which you'd like to discuss, yeah.
Sounds good. With the traffic situation, because you know, school's about to start on Thursday. I know, well, we're talking about it, and I know you and what we're talking basis, but just to get a little bit more information so our residents can know more about just the policing area during the school hours. Another topic, too, that I wanted to bring up was there's been three different days of recently during this month already. You know, where Roberts is connecting to Stater Brothers. I'm not sure if that green net that kind of blocks off the view of the other side where the double traffic is going to be opened up is part of confusing the drivers, because I almost got involved with a head-on collision already closely three times, and I'm trying to avoid that it happened to any other residents, especially when school's about to start. They believe that that left turn lane is actually make-up left turn, which is actually not the case. We're still in that single lane, so I just want to bring that up to the decision to you and to the council and see if you have any ideas for when school starts for policing.
So, I'll take a look at the green net issue at Roberts and Cherry Valley. Maybe it sounds like there's a, it's causing obstruction, and then maybe some science issues.
Yeah, we probably need to get with the project manager for comments there, too.
Okay, and then for traffic-related enforcement around schools, you know, I think everybody I think everybody in here knows that, that traffic around schools during drop-off and pickup can be, uh, very tough, heavy, congested. I will let our patrol staff know that, um, there's some requests to conduct additional enforcement in the area. And then we can look at the traffic flow around the school, um, getting me to get with the school district and see how the traffic's flowing, what their pickup looks like in and out of their parking lot and those type of things.
Shada, Captain?
Thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff Captain Northwood. Alright, that, uh, leads to our Fire Chief Report.
Thank you, how's that? Sorry. So, uh, Mayor Protem, council members, thank you, staff. Um, calls to, for service to date are, uh, fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-three, which is about a thirty percent increase from this time last year. In all categories, we're up slightly, but the most significant one and a takeaway is calls for service for auto and mutual aid responses outside the city. Total response times are about seven minutes. That's the bulk of it.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
Fire Chief? Thank you.
Thank you so much. That brings us to business items. Item number thirteen, I believe that is our city manager.
Actually, I'm going to have our, uh, building official, David Fredburg, um, uh, give this presentation.
Thank you, well. Good evening, Mayor Protem, uh, council members. I'm David Fredburg, your building official and happy to be so, by the way, it's a nice city. Pardon?
If you can speak into the microphone, please, yeah.
I'll just talk louder.
There you go.
Anyway, um, so every three years, the, as the ordinance states, the, uh, the state of California revisits and, and adopts updated building codes and standards. And as a normal procedure and as required by law, they publish these standards. And then the City of Calamasa will review the standards to see if we need to make any changes to any previous amendments to these standards that are specific to the City of Calamasa. In reviewing them this year, the, um, there were some minor verbiage changes. Just to clarify a, a couple of things, if you look through it, like more explaining what a pool barrier perimeter wall is as opposed to a cloth fence and, uh, but the main note, um, in reviewing and through talking with many building officials throughout Southern California, with the proliferation of auxiliary dwelling units and many property owners choosing to use a manufactured home placed on private property, which does take it away from HCD oversight and gives it to the local authority having jurisdiction. And being that we have no reference standards at this time to reference and make sure everything's done safely and properly and co-compliant, we have added, uh, to adopt the HUD, the H-U-D standards for the, for the mobile homes. And it's been reviewed very carefully. Um, and there are pages two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three, uh, the adoption is in there. And it just gives us a reference standard so, so we can point to something when, when, when we're doing the inspections and plan checks. And the only note I would add, I made a mistake when I, uh, the very last sentence of that says no less than forty-eight inches. It should say no greater than forty-eight inches and that will be rectified prior to the second reading. And any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have none.
No?
I'll, I'll just add, this is kind of an, an odd one that, with the building codes because the building codes usually, when you have the first reading is when you do the public hearing. And then you just have the second reading on consent typically. But with these, you have to do an item first for first reading and then the public hearing follows during the second reading. So we will have a public hearing for this item at the next meeting. Just wanted to clarify just a procedural thing.
So, so part of the request tonight is that you would introduce the ordinance for first reading by title only and set the hearing for your next council meeting.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll, uh, introduce the first reading of ordinance number four-one-five by a title only. An ordinance of the City of Calamasa, California, adopting reference the twenty-twenty-five additions of the California Building Residential Electrical Mechanical Plumbing Energy Historical Building, Fire Existing Building and Green Building Standards Codes, which are codified in Title twenty-four of the California Code of Regulations and the twenty-twenty-four addition of the International Property Maintenance Code, the nineteen-ninety-six edition of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Permanent Foundation Guide for Manufactured Housing, uh, with, uh, appendices there too, including amendments, additions, and deletions, and admitting Title, uh, fifteen of the California Municipal Code. And also set a public hearing for August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five to conduct the second reading of ordinance number four-one-five.
Thank you, council member. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's four-zero. Okay. Councilmember, uh, Mayor and council members reporting on county and regional meetings, conferences, or just updates here. So, Councilmember Kundit?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I did not attend any, uh, required meetings, uh, since the last time we met. Um, but I did want to make a couple of comments. Um, one, I don't know Howard's, I think Howard had already left. But, um, in, in light of his, um, stepping down from the commission, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge his many years of, um, great service to our community as well as the community of Ucaipa and, uh, just wish him well on his new endeavor. And then likewise, wanted to specifically thank our staff, um, who have been just professionally engaged in the Food Truck, um, Fridays. I mean, they are fantastic events. I wish the News Mirror would cover them a little more to let people know. But, um, you guys are doing a great job and, uh, putting a lot of your time out there. And so it doesn't go unnoticed, you know, we thank you for that and, uh, just kudos to you and keep doing a great job like you guys do. That's all I have.
Excellent. Councilmember Manley?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I did not attend any regional meetings. Uh, I just do also want to thank Howard Reeves, um, one of the first people I met over here. So I served with him for, for two years on the Parks Commission before I came over here. So I appreciate, uh, all of his hard work and the many, many years that he gave to the city in many different capacities. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I haven't been that long in the council, so I, um, I can tell that Howard was committed to the community and all, all the hard work and he's seen all the changes. So I, um, thank him for all his services that he did to our city. And, and with that, with our staff, our amazing staff, that they have, um, definitely worked every single day all the way until their Fridays on their, on their days off. Cause I know they're all off on Fridays and they've been putting in their hard time, uh, for the, for events at the Summerwinds. So I appreciate it, especially now that it's super hot out there, because you're starting to feel the heat now. So I appreciate all the hard work that you guys started doing. And I noticed this Friday, there was a lot more people, there was a lot more cars on the street. So the work is spreading out there. So hopefully we can continue with more events. But I know with these type of events, there is a lot of, uh, work that happens in the backend. So I really appreciate that. Um, another thing too, I did attend, um, on behalf of, of myself and for, just to kind of educate myself for the community as well. I attended the Down Center Society in Texas. So I was in Dallas, uh, last two weeks ago, I believe. There's been a lot of things happening. So I was out there for, uh, since Thurs- Wednesday all the way through Sunday. Uh, so I heard a lot of the educational, uh, uh, people and parents as well too. And what I got from there too is just the, there's just not a lot of awareness out there, not only for, uh, Down Center, but for other kids and adults with disabilities, that they will like to see not only the state, but the city as well to kind of implement to support the families' needs. And I do see ourselves here in the City of Calamasa because we're, because we're just starting. I mean, we, we don't have a lot of development here to kind of see any resources and support to provide to our families. One of the things too, I know we're going to be getting some new, hopefully diners, restaurants and stuff too. I remember when it was, uh, uh, taking care of my little ones. It's one of the biggest things I did struggle was to find, uh, diaper changes inside this, inside the restrooms, especially the males, because the males are just, they don't think that there's dads out there taking care of their little ones. And usually they're all in the females' restrooms. So that was one of the biggest challenges. So I do want to see something like that in the future for any future developments to kind of have a diaper changing inside the males' restrooms. And that will end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also have a brief report. I attended, um, Mesa Verde Ad-Hoc. Some exciting stuff coming, uh, to council and to the public. So stay tuned for more information on that. Uh, attended RCA, Regional Conservation Authority and our wonderful local COG, WR COG. Uh, and I'll make sure the council gets reports on those meetings. But I won't bore you with those here right now, although very important business did occur. So I also want to say, uh, thank you to Howard Reeves for his many years of service to the community. I served with him as well on the Parks and Trails and Community Service Commission when I first got to know him. Very, uh, colorful, fun, lively individual, passionate as well. And, um, he will be missed, uh, but thankful that he's moving on to, uh, some important endeavors as well. So just want to echo what my colleague said as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for his reports and comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, just one quick announcement, um, we, you know, as everyone knows, I do the podcast every other week. And the next episode will release this Friday. I will have a very special guest on the podcast this time around, not going to announce who it is. You'll have to tune in and find out. Well, I asked you before and um, so you'll have to, you'll have to tune in and find out, but I think everyone will enjoy it, so that's it.
Do this on a clip, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'm going to adjourn the regular meeting of the City Council to the next meeting of City Council on Monday, August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five.